When your area is scheduled for collection, please visit the city's website, www.pulman-woah.gov/leaves for dates and details. We do have football coming back up. Remember, the Pullman Transit is providing special park and ride service for WSU home football games beginning three hours prior to kickoff. Take Cougar Express 1, 2, or 3. All rats drop off and pick up at Martin Stadium. And with Halloween upon us, we have two city events that are Halloween, and I know there's a number of other community ones. The Spooky Splash, all ages are welcome for Halloween deck, deck craft activities, pool, pumpkin patch, and a spooky family movie during the Spooky Splash event on Saturday, October 28th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Pullman Aquatics and Fitness Center. And little ones, 3 to 10, and their grownups are invited to the Recreation Center for a Halloween carnival, including prizes, booths, and special treats on Tuesday, October 31st, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Coming up on October 16th, the City Pullman's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, the DIB Committee, is holding a public forum. It's on Monday, October 16th, at the City Council Chambers. All community members are invited to drop in any time between 4:00 and 5:30 to share their concerns and learn about the DIB Committee. Please remember, this is a meet and greet-style event, so there are no need to arrive at a particular time. And the last one, we have upcoming Water Summit that is on Thursday, October 26th. It will be at the SEL Event Center from 4:30 to 8:00. The theme this year is on transforming our relationships with water. And for more information, can be found if you go to PluseSpaceandWatersummit.org's website. So that is our announcements. And with that, first up, we have a presentation that is the Phoenix Conservancy Future Plans and Updates, and with that, the Executive Director, Chris Stuke.
I very much appreciate the opportunity to come and speak today. And for those that aren't familiar with us, give a bit of an introduction. And for those that are, give some updates on where the Phoenix Conservancy is currently, and a little bit about where we're headed. For background, we founded right here in Pullman. The Phoenix Conservancy is a small grassroots nonprofit in 2016 founded with the mission to restore endangered ecosystems globally, for communities that depend on them, and the conservation of biodiversity. And despite some unusual and fairly difficult times in the past years, being a nonprofit, or being a young nonprofit through the COVID pandemic, I'm very happy to say that as a gross metric of gross revenue, we've grown from annual revenue of about $8,000 in 2019 to approaching $300,000 this year. So fairly rapid growth, and we certainly hope that that continues. In addition, I'm very proud to say that our work has increasingly been recognized, not only with a number of local publications and podcasts and similar, but we also were honored to be featured in the Smithsonian Magazine just this past year. And our mission does unfold on a local, national, and global scale, in these nested geographic scales. Primarily, I'm going to be speaking about while we do work in the Great Plains, endangered and highly fragmented prairies in the Great Plains. On global scale, we work with restoration of rainforests in Madagascar. Today, I'm going to be talking about our local-scale project, which is critically endangered Palouse Prairie, and how we are working to weave that into the urban framework of Pullman and other Palouse communities. If you hadn't heard of Palouse Prairie, that's totally normal, actually. And one of its major threats, the major threat to Palouse Prairie is its own obscurity. Lifelong Pullman residents, many have never actually seen full-blooming Palouse Prairie, which you see in this photo here. It is, as a result of the obscurity, and the obscurity's result, it is about 1% of it, its original extent remaining, very likely less than that. And that that is remaining is extremely isolated and very fragmented. And as a result, even organizations and projects attempting to restore the prairie have a chronic shortage of native seeds. And because it isn't very widely known, it's often very, very difficult to find regular funding that would be required for ecosystem-scale restoration. And our work is primarily to address those concerns through restoration. And one of the major questions that we get is, well, do we want to just convert the Palouse back into a sea of prairie? And we don't. And that's obviously not realistic. But what we do very much want as a blueprint for the continued survival of Palouse Prairie is to increase functional connectivity of the ecosystem, in the goal of connecting these large areas. For example, in the gear on the left, you might imagine step-toe butte and camiac butte, which are two of the most large publicly accessible Palouse Prairie sections in existence, completely cut off from each other, and functionally as though they were their own little islands and their own little seas. So a lot of what we are working to do is to restore roadways, otherwise unused land areas, and increase functional connectivity to restore an ecosystem that works, at least in some function, as it should. And in doing so, creating urban seed sources, revenue sources for ongoing restoration, and ultimately restoring ecosystem benefits to the Pullman and Palouse communities. The two major foci that I'm going to talk about today, we have two principal goals here on the Palouse. And one of them is to restore as much functionally-connected, diverse Palouse Prairie as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can. That takes the form of two major foci that we work on. One is our so-called Pocket Prairies Program, which I'll talk about today. The other is Tier One, as we designate our sites where we do restoration that do not have a budget. That really kind of limits what we're able to do. So on Tier One sites, such as Conservation Park or Missouri Flat Creek, where we've been working on restoration, we're limited by how much revenue we can generate for those projects, since they don't have a budget standing. And the second major focus for our work is to create microeconomic feedbacks that generate funding for restoration. Social enterprise, for example, Palouse Biochar, that we'll talk about today very briefly as well. When I talk about Pocket Prairies, we've defined that as small-scale, usually less than an acre, restoration sites within the urban landscape. This is typically in people's yards, or on businesses, or properties, and landowners that are interested in having a water-resistant, or a very low-water, very heat-resistant, drought-tolerant landscape, that when it blooms, as you can see, it's quite a show. A lot of our native species are very, very colorful, so it creates these really visually attractive, but also very low-water landscapes. They create these tiny little islands of habitat that would not seem to be consequential, but on my next slide, I get to show you the most fun slide that I think I get to show. These are funded through contracts with landowners, and they do increase functional connectivity of the Palouse ecosystems at large by creating stepping stones for things like pollinators, mesocarnivores. Pullman has quite a large population of red fox, for example, that uses these small pockets of habitat to move between areas. And ultimately, while the rolling hills of the Palouse are part of our major sort of local natural heritage, Palouse Prairie gets kind of lost in a lot of cases, and we have plenty of things to celebrate, including a species that is functionally extinct on the Palouse at this point. Monarch butterflies, there used to be about 2,000 of them, I think in 2021, in the entire Western United States, functionally extinct in the Palouse Prairie. And this year, I got the best email I've gotten in years, which is one of our restoration landowners sent this photo of a female monarch appearing on a restoration site that was a little less than one year old. So they will find these pockets of habitat, even though they're extremely small, and they seem like they don't matter. For the Palouse and Pullman community, what it really does is not only create these little pockets of wildlife habitat, one of the major benefits of having natural areas and healthy, intact ecosystems is an increase in mental health. It is really well documented, people getting a chance to interact with nature, which is why we have walking trails that give people that opportunity, more so if it's sort of woven into their daily lives. And water, of course, is a major focus for this council and for the Palouse communities coming very, very soon. And Palouse Prairie not only doesn't require additional water, other than natural precipitation once established, it also does a really good job of holding onto water in these dense, deep root networks to typify the species that are native here. In addition, erosion control and carbon sequestration, and a list of others, are some wonderful ecosystem services that are provided by these microprairies, even for those that don't have them. So the community generally benefits from one or even a few landowners that choose to put this on. I'm very happy to say that this is catching on, and we are very busy, which is a very good thing to have. As an exemplar of our social enterprise projects, Palouse Biochar is a solution that we ran into while generating lots and lots and lots of invasive species biomass, so weeds that we remove. We didn't want to just dump them or burn them. And we stumbled into this conversion of any organic mass into highly-stable carbon compounds, referred to as biochar. It's very, very old, but it's seeing pretty much a renewal that's about 1,000 years in the making. These really stable compounds, including graphene, can remain in soils for hundreds to thousands of years, in a very, very stable compound. I won't even be able to scratch the surface of what it can be used for, but suffice to say that it has a lot of different uses for agriculture, aquaculture, water, and soil treatment. And in fact, we are trialing currently, with Pullman disposal, a raw biochar stormwater filtration, which seems to be going quite well. We are very interested in using it in restoration primarily. It neutralizes acidic soil very well and increases water retention in the soil. But as an agricultural commodity, it has very high value and a possibility to generate a novel industry here in Pullman, estimated between $1,000 to $2,000 a ton as a commodity right now. And the best of all, it can be generated from leaves, brush, grass, pretty much anything organic. So on the horizon for the Phoenix Conservancy, we've been in touch with the Noxious Weed Board to start doing a lot of contract weed control. We've gathered there's a lot of interest, but not a lot of options for landowners interested in controlling weeds. And this is very much in line with our mission and very much what we do. A little further down the road, we're developing longer-term and larger-scale restoration partnerships, including a recent partnership we're particularly proud of with Pullman School District, doing restoration and building activities for STEM education relating to restoration and native plant communities into the curricula for Pullman School. We're also developing a conference that we hope to have soon. We've noticed that there's a lot of projects and a lot of people doing this and interested in saving and restoring Palouse Prairie, but not as much communication as might be, sharing techniques and so on, so in the process of developing that. And then ultimately, working towards a biomass collection station for the community to drop off unwanted biomass that may or may not want to be going to the dump, which we can then convert back into carbon to be stored right here on the Palouse. So finally, as I wrap up, I'd like to thank the council again for giving me the opportunity to speak. And looking towards the future, if I was to have requests on the behalf of the Phoenix Conservancy in our work, my request would be to enact policies that promote and celebrate Palouse Prairie and our native species, which we certainly have plenty to celebrate for those that know that they're there. I would ask the council potentially to incentivize and reward businesses and landowners that choose to go down this path. There are more and more, but the more that do and more that take this path, we feel very strongly are doing the whole community a service and certainly deserve to be rewarded. And finally, we would ask to enact policies promoting biochar as an emerging and climate-friendly industry here in the Palouse. With that, thank you very much for your time, and happy to answer any questions that might come up.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Willer, then McCall.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your work that you're doing here and in the region, and Madagascar. That's really awesome. My question is, have you ever had any experience with converting, like, and I'm not saying this, so I'm not getting rid of any parks, but converting parks that were, you know, very grassy, that sort of stuff, into a natural-type environment?
We have in a number of different parks. We're very happy to be working with Kurt and, it depends on what you're asking. If you're talking about sod removal and things like that, we do a fair bit of that. It's really very site-specific. We're not focused on, I think the fear that comes up is people think that we might be focused on just converting everything back into prairie. And what we're really after is these unused pieces of land, little margins of fields. We're very interested in areas that are built into parking lots that are just dirt, things like that. So with that respect, yes, we do have an increasing portfolio that we can show. It is a long-term process, and we have a couple of sites now that have gone through the four-year, three-year, four-year cycle and built into an apartment complex, and it's indistinguishable from native prairie at this point. So we look forward to getting more and more. We're very good at removing sod now, I'm sorry to say. It's very, very time-intensive work, but depending on the site, I would say, yeah, very much, and we're looking forward to more. Thank you.
Councilmember McCall.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. And I can't emphasize enough how much, you know, to people that are listening, how much these small changes can affect big changes. It's amazing. I'm lucky enough to be able to be out and about in the Palouse, and we are seeing the effects of climate change. I can't remember when I've seen so many lizards in a year, and that's a little unusual. But the small changes really do make huge impacts. Roy Druffel stocked his pond last year, and bald eagles showed up. I mean, what sort of a message does that have? You know, it's amazing, and we're seeing more orioles. We're seeing more, for the very first time, I saw a Lazuli bunting in my yard. And never seen one before, I had to look it up, I didn't know what it was. I thought it was an escaped parakeet. These are fantastic native species, and the smallest of changes in your yard, or in an eyebrow, in a farmer's eyebrow or something, you all know what that is, right? Okay. Yeah, makes huge differences. And when you're out there and you get a chance to walk through an eyebrow, you will make, you will be, it's unbelievable what you'll see out there that you never thought you would see in the middle of a 1,000-acre stubble field. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is very much a Field of Dreams kind of thing. Build it, and they will come.
Councilmember Dubin.
Yes, thank you so much for this presentation. Really thoroughly enjoyed this, and for all the reasons that have been stated. You were talking about asking us to incentivize and reward businesses and landowners, and then you talked about some of the marginal land, like maybe by a parking lot or something like that. I'm just curious, what all, what kinds of businesses and land you're looking for? Like, somebody wants to turn their yard over, is that something you would be interested in?
Yes, actually, very much. One of the major focal points of the Micro Prairies and Pocket Prairies Program is to emphasize that a yard doesn't have to be either a native landscape and a native prairie, or an attractive aesthetically pleasing yard. It can very much be both. So we're interested in, I would say, anything. We have done some of our most interesting work in some of our apartment complexes in areas, like I said, that are built into the medians of a parking lot that aren't used for anything except for dog restrooms, as far as we can tell. A lot of our native pollinators have a home range that, in some cases, like bumblebees are quite large, but in some of the very small bees, they can have a home range that's 1,000 square feet. So if you're a tiny bee and you never leave 1,000 square feet, this little island can mean everything to you. So even something the size of this chamber, or the size of a couple of parking spaces, is very much worth doing and can host dozens of species.
Thank you. That hard work and all that flexibility is probably why you've grown so quickly, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And kind of in response to that, I've had the pleasure this last year of working with Chris Stuke and Phoenix Conservancy to convert my front lawn into one of these prairies. And so it doesn't matter what size it is, and we're very much enjoying it, but then also, you've had some great success. I know with DABCO, you've had a relationship where you've gone in and hit a number of the areas around the town with them. So that's, it's, he really will work with whatever size and whatever opportunity that's there.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
So next up, we have the public comment period. There is two different opportunities for comment during, a council meeting, one's during this public comment. This has, relates to anything that we're doing, final action. So persons may comment on any agenda item. The city council will take final action, including the consent agenda, but excluding items where public comment was previously accepted, and this includes prior public hearings. So this would be consent agenda items, 1 through 11, and then the regular agenda items, 1 and 2, which are the resolution, resolution accepting the pre-design report, and then also the Project Downtown Walk of Fame elements and project redesign. There is, at the end of the meeting, opportunity for new business that isn't related to this. So is there anyone who would like to provide public comment on any of these items? Okay? If you can make, so, and there is a sign-in sheet, I believe, that's there, so please make sure you've signed in, go ahead and make your way, and we'll, you'll have three minutes for public comment.
All right. Do we have slides that I send? Or?
And while this is getting set up, for those that are doing public comment, do make sure you do sign in. That way, we can get it accurately recorded in the minutes.
My name is Lisa Carloy, and as you consider finalizing the plans for the downtown project, I wanted to share some ideas and requests for improving the bike and pedestrian safety as part of these plans. And so to this end, we implore you to please remove the monuments from downtown. They are way too big for the space. The cardboard mock-ups that we brought to the town hall, and I brought them again here, are almost a scale. If anything, they are too small. They are smaller than they are shown in the plans. They're so big, and there's four of them, right at the mouth of Pine Street Plaza, that they create a hazard for cyclists and pedestrians at this very, very busy intersection. Furthermore, they severely constrict Pine Street Plaza, which is our only open, flexible space in the downtown. So my request of council is to please remove the monuments from the plans entirely before going out to bid, and plan on relocating them elsewhere. I do have a suggestion for where you might consider relocating them. The Walk of Fame fits really well with the gateway designation of the WSU Visitor Center. The Walk of Fame includes both WSU and Pullman categories. Its very essence is to celebrate the contributions of both entities. So our recommendation and request is to explore placing names on beautiful plaques along the red walls at the Brellsford WSU Visitor Center. And furthermore, this is really where visitors will be most likely to see them and learn about the honorees. Now, I'd like to talk about the bike and pedestrian experience on Main Street. So as you know, the plans call for a five-foot-wide bike path at the sidewalk grade along the pedestrian pathway. This orientation increases the opportunity for conflict between cyclists and pedestrians. So instead, we request that you revise the plans to move the bikes closer to the street and add a buffer of trees between the bikes and pedestrians. Furthermore, we can protect the bikes from parked cars with a four-foot utility corridor. The diagram in the corner is from the NACTO guidelines for a safe and effective bike path when it occurs alongside parked cars and pedestrians. So what would this look like for our plans in Pullman? Well, there are 30 feet between the building and the curb for all the amenities that we're trying to add. So the question is, then, how do you allocate those 30 feet? So imagine with me the buildings, right here by Pine Street Plaza, where Thomas Hammer is. If you take the existing sidewalk all the way to the curb, expand it additional five feet, you get a total of 16 feet for seating and pedestrians. There's room then for a five-foot planting bed for the new trees, which then protect, provide a little buffer with the five-foot bike path. And then there's still room for a four-foot utility strip, which protects the bikes from car door swings. So my request for council is, these appear to be a minor adjustment, and so my request is, if you would please explore with Welch Comer the feasibility of adjusting the bike path and trees as shown. I think this provides a better experience for downtown users. Expanding the sidewalk area accommodates furniture and open, calm pedestrian passage. Cyclists are more corralled and protected on both sides from pedestrians and parked cars. So we know that you have an October 18th deadline that you're going out to bid. We appreciate the urgency for that. But get these plans and changes underway while waiting for the bids to go out. So go ahead and go out for the bid, but be prepared to implement changes as a change order after the bid is accepted. As you know, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it's really worth getting it right. So appreciate your thoughtfulness and work on all of the plans as they've gone forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
And Mike will go ahead and do timekeeper for us.
Yeah, thank you all for listening to us today. We are a group of WSU Architecture students. We're also wanting to talk about the monuments or obelisks that are on the proposed plans for Pine Street Plaza specifically, and we just wanted to, like, provide our design considerations for that, so.
Firstly, this plaza is a public space, and there are concerns within the public that these obelisks should not be there, so we urge you to listen to the public. The additions to Pine Street Plaza should represent actual residents who bring constant and consistent value and care to the community. So listening to the community members that live here and reside here is very important. Putting up these obelisks will make a community space unusable, shutting it down instead of revamping it, which is the hopeful intention.
I would think it's important to consider, especially the resident's point of view on this specific thing. I was here and living here during COVID, and it is very well in my memory that while the Pullman was kind of abandoned by students and faculty of WSU in some cases, it was really kept afloat by the residents that are the core of this community.
Some of the reasons why we believe these obelisks are bad-designed for this community space is because we believe that they primarily do not serve the public. We think that these obelisks stand as very separate from the people who use this space, and don't allow for any sort of interaction. They're very permanent, and they don't change with the community. Instead, they stand as very concrete engraved markings. And we really just believe that these take up valuable public space that could be used to better serve the community in other ways.
Yeah, and some of these suggested items that we suggest would be something like a community board, where community members could put posters up of events that are happening. It would be by the community, for the community, and it would restore the democracy that the plaza brings to the Pullman community. Additionally, more benches would allow for people to use the space more. It'll allow for more seating, and it'll expand for the seating that people already utilize, like when eating outside, as a Thomas Hammer or Mella, for example. And lastly, we propose more trees and a shade structure, so that you can expand the use of the plaza all year round, even during the summertime, so.
So from WSU students, this is our consideration of this design. Something that could be interacted with and better represent the community would be our design advice to you all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember McCall.
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that I think we'll touch on probably as this day goes on, or this evening goes on, is some of the misinformation that's floating around out there. These are not obelisks, basically. These, that's a square thing, like what's behind you. That is not an obelisk. You used the term obelisk five times. These are not obelisks. Letters have been written calling these things obelisks. If we're going to be right, let's be right. And I own two historic homes, two very different historic homes in this community, and architecture is something very, very, very dear to my heart. And when people say, "Oh, what about the obelisks?", I'm like, "What the heck are you talking about?". So if we can all get our terminology straight, that would be very helpful in moving forward to the improvements that we seek.
What exactly shape would you call the structures that are to be built? And how are they different from an obelisk?
Like, right behind you, there's no pyramid on top.
There's no pyramid on top? But on the drawings that there is?
On some of the drawings.
Okay.
The drawings that are approved by an architect have the pyramids at the top.
It's a shade.
Which makes it an obelisk.
It's a shade. It's a light shade. It's a light directing shade.
Okay. Semantics, but sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wiley Dollar. I've been a member of the community here. I've been a member of the community here since 2009. What would you refer to these as? Just so I get my, like, actual terminology correct?
I would refer them as something that needs to be removed.
Sure, okay, sure. I think the main issue for me as somebody who's been here since 2009, spent my childhood here, is we are removing something that serves a function here but needs to be removed, which are the maple trees. So the maple trees serve a function and they have to go. So that function is shade and that function is aesthetic beauty. And these things, regardless of what they are, they are, what, cubic boxes? They don't provide shade. They don't really provide aesthetic beauty to this area. So I think that's just something to consider. We have to remove the maple trees. That's just, that's, that's the way it is. It's unfortunate. I don't think that replacing them with something that literally reflects light is a good idea considering, as one of you guys commented, we are experiencing hotter temperatures in Pullman. We have been for the last at least five years now. It's very important to me, and I apologize, it's difficult to actually put out coherent sentences. But yeah, maybe just not removing shade and replacing it with things that reflect light. Does anyone here have any thoughts on that?
This is really a time for public comment as opposed to a discussion time. So it's really more public comment unless somebody has a specific question.
Sweet, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Give me just a minute. I think you all know me, Bobby Ryder, and I am here to just kind of touch on many of the themes that have already been spoken of. I handed out earlier, just a minute, I'm gonna go through this. Oh, what do I use? This? Okay, I got it, I got it. Yep, sorry. Okay, there we go. So I've handed out to you basically my punchline. That is, oh, that's right, where it's not a touchscreen, is that looking at timing, I know that you're under the gun or feeling under the gun to move forward on this project. Before going out to bid, I respectfully request that you do remove the monuments from the plans. I think there's opportunity with the gateway, as Lisa referred to, or, you know, there's probably other ideas that we haven't even had a discussion about as a community, and these are, are massive enough that they require community discussion. So please remove them from the plans. After, I know you want to go out by October 18th, so after that, I would, we would like you direct Welsh Comer to draft changes to the placement of the bike path, as was shown by Lisa's slides, and the placement of trees. We have spoken multiple times with DOT and they have said, because we were following the NACTO guidelines, it would take, it would be a 30-day review. They really didn't see it as being any more than that. So please be ready to implement these updates as a change order when, when the bids come in. And finally, be determined to build the safest and most pleasant experience in our downtown possible. Please explore options before deciding that they cannot be done. Take the time to explore them. I know you've seen this image multiple times, but what I want to focus on here is, again, bringing the bike path right next to the, right, right next to the, to the utility corridor. And I was out there today with my level and looking at the slopes on the sidewalks in relation to the trees. And it is very clear to me that there is opportunity to move those, to, to leave some of those trees, many of them actually. On, there's roughly six to nine existing trees per block. If you could just keep 50% of them, it would make a huge difference and create a much smoother, smoother transition for the community as they go through this. Rather than do a big shocker, this is possible. Let's, I believe we have time to figure that out and please consider that. I have only one thing to say. I think that was it. Oh, and the, and the pavers. Please consider the pavers. If, if we end up including this.
Your time's up.
If we end up including, going through the plaza, those pavers are all gone. That is not just stamped concrete down the middle. They will all be gone. So it's disingenuous to say that we're just gonna do stamped concrete down the middle. That needs to be really carefully thought out and it's possible. Thank you very much for a little overtime.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to provide a public comment at this time? If not, then we'll close public comment and we'll move to the consent agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the city council without separate discussion. First, if I can have a motion by the, to read the consent agenda by title only.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, Thaddeus Sullivan, will you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the September 26, 2023 Town Hall Meeting Minutes and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to dispense with the reading of the October 3, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes and approve them as submitted. Item three, a motion to set a public hearing on 2024 Revenue Sources with the date of October 24, 2023. Item four, a motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP Reserve Fund for 2023 Q3 in the amount of $366,053. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 111544 through 111564, electronic transfers 125, 126, 1047, and 1053 through 1058. Payroll direct deposits numbered 87711 through 88050 totaling $1,553,880.11. Item six, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 111565 through 111575, electronic transfers 127, 128, and 1060 through 1064. Payroll direct deposits numbered 88051 through 88393 totaling $1,42,522.10. Item seven, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 200092 through 200176 totaling $3,596,849.07. Item eight, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 200177 through 200276 totaling $4,871,221.04. Item nine, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 200277 through 200332 totaling $570,894.86. Item 10, a motion to authorize the Public Works Director to procure a new three-quarter ton four-by-four pickup truck to replace vehicle number 07-046. And finally, item 11, a motion to authorize the Capital Improvement Plan purchase of battery powered, excuse me, extrication tools and equipment for the Pullman Fire Department.
Thank you very much. Are there any items that any council members would like to have removed? If not, the vote is on the consent agenda for items one through 11. All those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry, motion and second?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we need a motion to, so a motion and a second? Can I have a second?
I move to approve.
And a second. And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. Next up is public hearing. To hold a public hearing to consider Pullman Transit 2022 Annual Report and Six-Year Transit Development Plan without Wayne Thompson, our Transit Manager.
Thank you, members of the council, members of the public. Every year you see transit as part of a public works annual report, but this is a more extensive transit-specific report that we provide to be grant compliant, grant eligible, so it goes to the state as a six-year transit development plan and last year's annual report. Much of what you see is, is repetitive year to year, some of the history, but our goals, our statistics get updated. It's based on a fairly rigid state-designed platform, but I try to make it as local and as personalized as I can. One thing that never changes is we started in 1979 as a city agency, a division of public works. That is rare in the state of Washington of the 32 transit agencies. Only three are city agencies. Our primary funding mechanism has always been utility tax, which is the only agency who relies on that. Everyone else hits sales tax. So we rely on fares, our service contract, like we have a WSU, and more recently, an increased reliance on FTA operating grants. That utility tax, just to note, is about, about 20% of our operating, but has been keeping up with about that 20% figure for some time. It's about 1.0 million annually. Our service is within the city limits, run the, the fixed route bus service to most neighborhoods within the community. We have a Dalaride van para-transit service for our community's seniors and those with Both of those systems saw ridership decline within the past three years. So a lot of the statistics you'll see in the report are based on 2019 and trying to get back to 2019. Ridership, for example, for Dalaride was, was already over 20,000. It was 24,000 in, in 2019. Now it's recovered to 12,000, so we're only 50% back to where we were ridership-wise, but we still have a demand. Fixed routes, we went from 1.4 million to under 500,000 at one point, and now we're back up to over 800,000, so a 60% recovery from pre-pandemic. The final impact, say, of those past three years is that we still have not gone back to 10 o'clock or back to midnight service. We end our evening service at 10:15. That's when all the vans, all the bus pull off the road. I do see six months or a year down the road. We do intend to return to full service, but we need increased ridership. We need more staff. That's been a, a regular challenge for us. The annual report portion of this, of this plan reads more like a, you know, an agenda of our former city council topics, but you've, you've seen a lot of these, but all hit the highlights. We received approval to purchase a new Dalaride van. We received approval to purchase a long-laided bus washing truck. The former one was a 1998 two-wheel drive. We're finally up to one-to-be. We received our third electric bus in 2022. Finalized our three-year bargaining track with Amalgamated Transit Union. We awarded the Transit Facility Master Plan to TC Architecture. Received approval from you to apply for five months last October. And also in October, you authorized a rise fare structure, which made youth rides all fare-free for 18 and under. Looking forward at the actual development plan portion of, of the report, our intention is to continue to operate in a financially responsible and sustainable manner. I think that is, that is critical, that we remain sustainable. Going to work towards that zero emissions fleet. Three buses out of 25 is getting there. Three more are about to be over, so on a small fleet, that percentage changes really quickly. We'll take our next steps towards meeting the 20-year needs of our facility, so that master plan that I mentioned, and you'll hear more about tonight. We need to set and maintain the replacement cycle for our capital assets. So worded plainly, that is buy more buses before your old ones wear out, and that's usually about 12 years. And we have had to set buses aside because they're not functional before we have placements in place. So we need a plan and we need to be able to stick with it. We need to continue to meet with our ATU, Amalgamated Transit Union representatives in the labor management meeting format that we started here in this last quarter. We have another meeting planned in February. It's critical that we continue to do that. And we need to work closer with city engineering and planning staff so that we have a true transit service growth plan. And that's something that's going to relate this week, actually. We will meet with our staff, not just react to what's been developed, but see it coming and plan ahead so the transit service is ready. So any input that you'd like to offer, I would incorporate into the, the final Transit Development Plan. It'll come back to you for final approval and I can submit it to the state.
Any council members? Nathan, Nathan, why?
Thank you. Wayne, I really appreciate this and all of your work has been just amazing. And you know it, but you're very humble, so appreciate all that you're doing. My, my question relates to really two things. One, GPSA has come to us regarding the loop route. And I know that was a discussion item that they wanted to work with WSU Transportation about, and I know there's some group that meets to discuss these, and, and I know this is going to come up again and again, especially in the future. So I wanted to ask about that. And then the second thing was, Mike and I have, have talked, and I talked briefly about the shelters for the bus stops. I really feel essentially with our, our weather, the seasons, it's, it's very important to find ways to fund shelter options for all of the bus stops. And this so includes ones with CAC and so on and so forth. So those are my, those are my two questions.
Okay. On the first topic, the, the route changes, the Transit Advisory Group, I believe the group you're talking about that would make recommendations through WSU Transportation Services, we met with them online briefly last week, just a quick meet and greet off the air. And that's the group that I expect when they meet next, if they receive that request, we'll hear it from them. So that request has not come to us yet. But I do know what you're talking about, restructuring of routes, and I do expect to hear more about that. As far as shelters, good news on that front. We, we do have a new shelter. We found an in-state resource in Yakima that builds shelter, so we no longer have to, to buy these from New York. And once that first installed and we're pleased with it, I'll be excited to order more in-state. We have some shelters already in town not being used because direction of, of certain routes, the opposite side of the road has unused shelters. So we have some relocation planned for the spring already. We need to pour concrete pads. So excellent to keep that in front, but it's, it's coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Dubin?
Thanks. Wayne, I was just interested in the ridership, how we've recovered, how we rebounded from COVID, have we?
No, we have not totally recovered. Fixed route ridership pre-pandemic was about 1.4 million. At the end of 2022, we were 800 and some thousand, so about 60% back to what we were in 2019.
Are, are you seeing an increase in that? Does it look like we're coming back or?
We are, we are. Infex routes are increasing quicker than Dalaride, which surprised me. So yeah, the numbers are there. They were, were going back slowly to where we were.
Ms. Parks?
Thank you. Wayne, I just want to thank you again for your, as Nathan said, just how well you manage transit and, and really help move people around in our community in, in quite easy way. I have a, someone I know who requires, had to apply for Dalaride service and just want to give an accolade to your staff out at the bus office. I'd never actually been, walked in there before. They were very helpful and I took it to them on a Friday afternoon, I think, at 2:00, and they called the, this person at like 4:30 and said, you're approved. So it was just very nice, they're very helpful and also on the phone and helping someone who is dependent. who is dependent on that service now, it's just a really, really fine service with very good people. So thank you.
Appreciate that, and that's where the credit should go, is to the staff. Thank you.
So I have a couple, two comments and then one question. For comment-wise, I am hearing comments from the community members about some of the wait times related to getting all the way around town, and, and so, so I don't know if it's just transition right, if it was transitioned back to traffic that was causing some of the delays, or if there was full buses and so a bus would skip and so they wouldn't get picked up. I, I have heard some of those comments from the community where it might take a full hour, whereas it should have been a 35-minute, you know, distance route that normally would take.
There is a time of the day. There is one time of the day where it is even Pullman fairly busy, but an hour is excessive. I've, I've heard of 45 to 50 minutes, but if ridership, full buses is the issue, we are putting trippers out now, now that the school age kids are riding, but it doesn't make the buses go faster. It just makes more room on the buses as they run. So if you can share specifics later, I'd be happy to look into those.
The second one I have is related to the dial ride, and, and this is more for the community to understand that with the dial ride, if you get scheduled, and I think you said if it's at least two days to three days ahead of time, then it's pretty well guaranteed that you'll get picked up. If you try to schedule the day of it, then it's dependent upon what our schedule is and, and how many, how many drivers we have. And so just from the community, if you know your schedule, communicate it ahead of time rather than others, but, but so I'm interested as a council, you know, if we're looking at, we're back at 2%, what's that timeframe that we need to make sure funding-wise that we're able to be able to have funding to absorb back to a fuller ridership?
Well, as far as the funding to, to run service, it costs as much to run it with five people onboard as 50, so we still need to seek grants, seek our contracts, charge fares. As far as the rate at other agencies are recovering, we're, we're on track with others. There are some that have already returned to full service levels. Pierce Transit, I believe, in Tacoma, but don't charge fares. That's one thing they claim has helped along is that they've encouraged new riders at the start of the pandemic with, with that approach. I would say within two to three years, we'll be back to where we were. I've been hoping for that for two to three years as well, but at the pace we're on, we'll never get to where we would have been, but we'll get back to 1.4 million rides in about two years. I do have some good statewide data that's provided just early this week I can share with council as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Then at this time, we'll open this up for the public hearing. If anyone who would like to make comments considering the Pullman Transit's 2020 annual report and six-year transportation, transit development plan. If so, please come to the podium. Do make sure you do, if you haven't already, sign in too.
My name is Lisa Carloy, and I have a keen interest in Pullman Transit. I write it all the time. One complaint that I have heard from, I teach at ASU, and we have labs until 10 o'clock, and transit service ends at 10:00, and so we've had students concerned for their safety, and they don't have a way to get home if that goes all the way till 10 o'clock. And so I guess my question or my request would be if they could just do one more run so that lab would get out at 10 o'clock, students have a way to get home. My second comment is that I use the, the bus tracker, the Bus Bin app on my phone, and it seems like it doesn't work as well now. It did pre-pandemic. It used to be like spot-on, and now it often doesn't seem to be tracking the bus. It kind of jumps all over the place. So I don't know if something going on with that, or if it's my phone, but I just thought I would mention, it doesn't seem to work as well as it used to. So thank you.
Are there any other? Yes.
Bobby Ryder, and my question is, maybe I wasn't listening, but I tried to. I was, are, is the transit still going to continue to travel the school kids? Is that partnership still place?
Wayne, I'll let you answer that one.
We do have many school students already riding the fixed routes. That's where the tripper concept has come in. We no longer contracted school bus-only service, but we have extra buses out so those kids can ride any of the community routes for free. And the second has been very useful in transporting those kids, so very, very well-used.
Okay. And, and since you're there, if you had any responses related to the lighter route or that 10 o'clock, or it might be a matter of, what's the process?
Sure. Those evening routes are 45-minute loops, not the 35 like during the day. So to get from 10:15, you know, back to where we used to be at midnight, we're talking about basically two more loops. That's where we intend to get anyway. It's a matter of funding. It's a matter of hiring drivers. At one point, I thought maybe January we'd get, and that may still happen, but without the staffing, it's, it's less likely. The other point, GPS tracker, we do need to hear this. We, we send the feedback to the company we work with, Grammatics. We tend to be getting a lot of upgrades to their system. They think better until we tell them what is, so I will share that, I will share that with you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? If not, I'll then close this public hearing, and with that, is any, any last comments?
No, no, I, I'll try to incorporate as much of this as I can to the, the report, as well as just regular action items that I can take care of outside of the report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We now move on to the regular agenda. First item is Resolution R 4623 relating to accepting a pre-designed report. And once again, Wayne Thompson?
Thank you, members of council. You bet. I'll pick up a bit here. In July, you heard from TCF Architecture, the, the firm that we hired to do Transit Facility Master Plan. They gave a summary presentation as well as provided a draft copy of their report. What they were asked to do was analyze our 20-year facility needs, not, not our service needs, but facility needs, and to make a recommendation for what we should be at, whether expanding or rebuilding in 20 years. Final product, their, their actual deliverable for this contract, is the Transit Facility Master Plan that, that you have for final approval. What we reviewed as part of that project were 11 sites off, off-campus from where we are. All of those locations, if had been pursued, would have required grading, a fairly expensive purchase price. More importantly, the, the bigger obstacles to going off-site were building a new fueling station and bringing mechanics with, with us, who currently can work on any of the city fleet, but moving away from ERD would have required we take mechanics with us. What is being recommended is that we stay on the Public Works campus location on Guy Street, but we leapfrog ERD to the south. That's behind ERD, it's behind the new fueling station, if you know where that is. It provides the room that we need to expand, keeps us close to those resources. It'll be compatible with a green electric fleet, including a generator. It would make no sense to have an electric fleet and not have a backup, so that is added. And the facility we're currently in will not be lost, it would be used by M&amp;O. As is, it's a good quality facility, it's just too small for us, and it cannot be expanded to accommodate our staffing or our bus needs. The cost of that option currently is about $22 million. The other option were closer to $40 million, and that's before you even look at the acquisition costs. Once the current phase of this project is complete, which is, the master plan is adopted, what staff will do is begin to look at the next steps for a form of design phase, and then start looking for grant runs to, to bring this to fruition. What we're asking is for council to accept the final pre-designed report for this Transit Facility Master Plan.
And with that, Councilmember Guido?
Wayne, I'm wondering if you could just, when, I missed that. When you're saying leapfrog where it currently is, to where?
It's where Park Street turns into Guy Street, that bend at the fueling station.
Okay.
If you should not make the turn to the ride onto Guy Street and go straight ahead behind the fueling station, there's a lot of M&amp;O solid waste, temporarily dumped there, street sweepings. That's the vacant parcel that we would own.
And, and was there, I remember us presented the different options. The concern around the plane?
It was from the start, an obstacle to expanding our current facility, and still is to go further west, because we're a stone's throw from the South Fork of the Plous, that close. FEMA is revising their flood plan maps right now, and the map that we have access to says all of the proposed plans are in the, the safe zone of beyond our floodplain.
Okay.
So that's a primary consideration, and their consultant is local, out of Moscow, so they're, they're familiar with those concerns, and the recommendation does address that.
Okay. Thanks for that recollection of that, that FEMA was going to be changing that standard, so, thank you.
If, if, if not, I have a motion moved to adopt.
Move to adopt Resolution R 46-23, resolution accepting the pre-designed report for a Pullman Transit Facility Master Plan as the final deliverable from TCF Architecture. Second.
Second. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we're on to our second item of the regular agenda. This is the Project Downtown Walk of Fame Elements and Project Redesign. And with that, Gurban, our city administrator.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This agenda item requested by the city council at this meeting held on October 3rd last week. Two items were asked to be brought back. The first of these was the Walk of Fame elements. So after staff and I reviewed the community discussions from September 26, city council discussion from October 3rd, staff believes the following options are available for action for council, and these are lit in no particular order. Leave the bid document as is with no change. Remove the, the Walk of Fame element item from the base bid and make it a bid alternative, creating the choice to award later as part of the product or not. Remove the item from the bid entirely and take no further action. Remove the item from the bid entirely and ask staff to work with the Hall of Fame Committee to explore different alternatives and report back to the city council, or some other item that we didn't think of when we were conferencing on this. The second item was the Project Redesign, and again, after viewing the two meetings that was previously mentioned, staff initiated conversations with Welch Comer, ascertained what project design would entail. Staff discussed this with the consultant multiple times in the last, most recently this afternoon. And with that, now is a good time for me to turn back to the council for your discussion, and staff has no recommendations on this agenda.
So with that, Councilmember?
So thank you, Mike. I think just dealing with the Walk of Fame first, it's my opinion to remove this item from the bid entirely and ask staff to work with the Hall of Fame Committee to explore different alternatives and report back to the council, and not to have it in the plaza. That would be my suggestion.
Councilmember Parks?
I, I agree with that. My concern is if the Walk of Fame is part of the funding that we already have for this project, and then we pull it, what happens to that? Then, then how is the project funding going forward? Will that money for the, be reallocated or to something else? And so that's my question, is what happens to funding if we pull it?
The current funding for that particular item? Well, again, we're still fully concerned with the base bid, making that that comes in on budget, and there are several other bid alternatives as well. We know that this downtown project, if we do everything, would be more than the amount of money we have. So I would say, you know, that piece kind of goes. I think the bigger concern is if we do come up with a solution in a year, 18, two years, how will we fund it then?
Correct. That, yes, also that. Because I was questioning what happens to the funding, and then how is it then funded going forward since we've pulled it from the plan? I understand philosophically, I'm in favor of it. I don't want this to come back at us as, "Oh, you didn't tell us to be no funding, and we'll have to figure that out." So I want that on the table now, so that we know that dollars are, we have to at least have an idea of where that's going, if we decide to pull it.
Okay. Councilmember Wright?
I would concur with my two colleagues who have indicated removing this item from the bid entirely and ask staff to work with the Hall of Fame Committee. I think it's very important that we get their input on this and move forward with it that way. And I think then, you know, as you mentioned, the, the base bid and what other kinds of things might, you know, be coming along with this. 12 months, 18 months down the road, we may have some other alternatives for funding this as well that I think are, are viable, but I think it, it's in all of our best interest to remove them from the document as it exists now and in the location that they are. Thank you.
With that, I entertain a motion if, unless...
No, I was just going to concur with what fellow council members have put forth.
So a motion that would be the number four. Councilmember Waller, do you want to give that, since you started it?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I just motion to remove the Walk of Fame element from the bid entirely and ask staff to work with the Hall of Fame Committee to explore different alternatives and report back to council.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council. When we come back with some alternatives, we'll make sure to talk about funding sources as well with that.
Thank you.
Are we going to have discussion as well about the other item on there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and so now, related to the Project Redesign piece, any discussion related to that? Councilmember Waller?
Sorry, I don't mean to take up the mic, but on that, Mike, I have a question. You had shared with me previously about the projected utility plan, Welch Comer. Is that something that was going to be presented tonight, or was that just something that...?
When you and I met Friday, it was short after a meeting we'd had with Welch Comer where we requested them to come back and present the underground utility piece as one of the items that council gave us for homework. There was four pieces of homework, if you remember. Two of them are this agenda tonight. Another one is the code enforcement issue to discuss the dogs, and currently the work plan on that, sorry Jake, I've not made eye contact with you on purpose, is October 24th. And then the overlay on the utility piece, which is what you're specifically referring to in November. So we charged Welch Comer to start with those overlays. And the first draft that we saw of the overlays had the water, stormwater, and wastewater, and we were still waiting for the electrical and the irrigation. So the one you and I were reviewing in my office just was a casual P and E mail. We saw the first draft of the irrigation and the electrical today during our meeting. It's not fully done, but it is, it's, everyone's a different color, is a different, everyone's a different color in the rainbow, so there's five of it, it's, it's everywhere.
Absolutely. Is it okay to reference some of that in, as I talk, the utility a little bit, even though it's not available to see?
I got the email, I could put it up, even though it's not a finished product, so everybody can kind of see what you're looking at while you're talking. I'd be, I think there's a jump drive in the...
Okay. And I did have questions for Welch Comer, they're not here. I, I think before I say anything, because I have really a few things, so I'm going to try and make it as brief as I possibly can. I know, I, I know I'm pretty tired of, of the discussion. I think a lot of us have been, you know, staying up late, thinking about this, waking up early, thinking about this, but I can just speak for myself. So one of, one of the things that, that had... So one of, one of the things that had been discussed in brief and is that Welch Comer said that with the utility plan that they had presented that Mike may be looking at or whatnot, they said that the three options, if they were to actually have the utility overlay when they first presented the three options back in November of twenty-two, I believe, or earlier, they would not have given us all three options. They would have only given us one. And that was the removal of the trees. If Welch Comer was here, I'm sure they'll probably see this afterwards, I would ask them and suggest to them not to present options that they don't think are reasonable. I especially, when I heard this news, felt that it was a bit of a bait and switch, saying that you could save some trees, you could save all trees except for the diseased ones, of course, or you could save no trees. So I was, I was a little surprised by this. And Welch Comer, if you are watching this, I would suggest when you do interact with future cities to kind of keep that in mind. Because I believe, you know, this whole project came about really a while ago when, when councilmember Sorensen, Allerson really, really was pushing for a revitalization of the downtown. It didn't, it wasn't, his whole view wasn't to be utilities and this sort of thing. He wanted a more vibrant downtown. And that was kind of the view that we went with. Now, it's my personal opinion that frankly, all the utilities that are in there right now, the state should be paying and helping us with financially. It's one of the only benefits of having a state highway through our downtown is that they should share some of the costs. But instead, we, the taxpayers, are shouldering it. But I digress. Real quick, I would like Welch Comer to answer the speed table. I've heard there's issues with possible snowplows. They're not going to, they're not here to answer it. And also, how many design issues have been reported to Welch Comer and how many have been addressed? I would ask, because when we look at this, this is a, this is, this is a mess.
This isn't designed to be in its final form.
Yeah, I understand. Now, when we were talking, and I have to, I have to say, I appreciate what Becky Dubin's letter to the editor where she explained a lot of the challenges that we're facing. You know, there are some trees that are outside of the industrial, outside of the utility area. Now granted, most of these are within it. And when I've talked to several people, arborists and so on and so forth, they said even if roots are nicked or damaged, they can survive, trees can survive. But it's important to have an arborist supervising so that they know which ones, which roots can be cut and which roots can't be cut. I also know that we've been given some information about Mark Sanborn, urban forestry technician who is interested in working with the city, if, if we decide that we want to retain these trees. I will just remind everybody, twelve trees need removed, twelve trees might be vulnerable or problematic, but the others, which, there's seventy-six in total, and I shouldn't be doing math up here, you can get the idea that a majority of them are healthy and a majority of them could be with proper supervision dealt with. Now, the easy path, but the most heart-wrenching, is to remove the trees. The more difficult path, and one that's, that's kind of, yeah, it's kind of risky, is to try to retain whatever trees that we can. And this would be my request, is to request for Welch Comer to try and save as many trees as is possible. And I'm okay if that's just, just me, I'm just expressing that. I feel regardless of what occurs, there's some things that need to be looked at that have brought up and a lot of this challenge, a lot of these sleepless nights have actually been really enlightening. And the suggestions that have occurred, I think the civic trust, the ideas of not only retaining some of the trees, but also creating a barrier in between the walkway and the bikeway is very innovative. I mean, I guess it's been done before, it's not reinventing the wheel. So it's, it should be something that, that, you know, shouldn't be a surprise, but I appreciate that. I think also, as Pullman moves forward, some of the things that we need to think about is, and this is where I'm looking at the forward, revitalizing the downtown isn't going to happen from ADA, just ADA sidewalks. It's not going to happen from wider sidewalks. It's not going to happen with all of this. It's going to take a concerted effort of several things. The bypass definitely, and we talked about that. The, there are ADA issues at the businesses right now. I talked to somebody who said they can't use bathrooms in a number of businesses downtown, even if they could get to it as far as ADA access. So that takes really the downtown businesses to be able to deal with that. I also feel if, if we decide that we need to remove these trees, the remaining, or the trees that need to come in next, we need to talk to an arborist about which ones can be put in, which I understand is a change order. But some of the trees are berry dropping and can stain the current sidewalks or the new sidewalks that we put in. I would also ask, because we had from PBAC, a presentation from PBAC this morning at Chamber, we're putting in irrigation and how water responsible? I mean, how, how does that work in our overall goals of water responsibility? And then upkeep of that? Is that something that we're going to have to dig into the cement or underneath the plants in order to update every couple of years, every five years? And last but not least, I think that whatever happens, when, if we end up tearing up all these trees, we need to research how the roots did spread so that not only it can provide additional information for the future for us, but also for other cities that may be facing this challenge. So I would say that, I do feel that, that we could go through a redesign. I do feel that we can save and retain some of these trees and, as I said last time, find a middle way to provide buffering between the bike and the walk and retain the trees and grow new trees. So that's it.
If the council indulged me for a moment while I have this item up, this is the document that Nathan was referring to and it wasn't disseminated because it is not complete. So I certainly apologize if somebody's seeing it for the first time with a little angst. That wasn't the intent behind this. But just to show real quick, here's Grand where it hits Main Street. You can kind of orient yourself. And then what happens here is when you get down to this end, it really starts back up here. So just imagine, you know, we've got one really long street, about a third of a mile, that's the project scope and we've just cut it and pasted it onto one piece of paper so we can see it all at once. So it's, you're not looking at Paradise or another piece. The blue is representative of the water lines that are coming through. The gray is stormwater?
Gray sewer.
Sewer, gray is sewer, green, like green is storm. And in the final drafts, when these are done, you're going to have orange for electrical and then a lighter blue for the irrigation line. So there's a lot more to come. But what's being discussed is this is all the areas that are going to be disturbed. And what you see is there's a tree here, these are the trees, kind of along those pieces. You can see there's some here and then along the trees. So like this tree is definitely in the area that's going to be disturbed and this one, we would have to get out the ruler and look at the key over there and see how far away it is and whether it'll be disturbed now or in a future draft. So this is the map that we're referring to.
Any questions related to the map? If not, on councilmember Dubin?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, councilman, councilmember Weller, for your sensitive and I sense passionate response. I share it. I don't feel like council has made a decision about the trees. I feel over the months, we have slowly come to frankly, a sickening realization that we, as soon as those jackhammers hit the sidewalk, we don't have a choice. And it's not even just the jackhammers hitting the roots. It's the jackhammers hitting the roots for sure. It's also concrete falling and chipping roots. It's the fungus. I think it's, forgive me, I'm not an arborist, but I know our arborists have talked about this ventricular wilt, which when I Google it is so deadly that if a tree gets it, we won't know immediately that the tree has it. They could survive a nick, but that fungus could, through the stress of the construction, through the nick, get this wilt and in a year die. And, and when it dies, it's so deadly, this fungus, that there's nothing you can do with the tree. You can't even use it as mulch because it spreads so quickly. This past week, I sat down and I rewatched the council meetings from October of 2022, November and the January of this year and February of this year, all when we discussed this project. And I listened really closely to Welch Comer and I share your concern because I think even at that time, when we asked Welch Comer, when we said, what is the probability that we could jackhammer around these trees and they would survive? The response was, it would be really rare, if not impossible. I think the thing with Welch Comer is we have some masters of understatement. From the beginning, even presenting the three options, and I agree with you, there's really one. It has not, they've been very clear that this is very, very difficult. We could talk, we could go on and talk about ADA and what happens five years. We could talk about the circumference of the trees and the, and the awnings and we, whatever aspect you want to talk about. But we cannot remove the sidewalks or the asphalt without damaging those trees. And let's say we do, let's say we do nick a root and we get the ventricular wilt, what will end up happening is having to remove that tree a year later with a stump in the middle of the sidewalk. So I want to thank you for that very sensitive approach to this. One other point I disagree with you on is that this is the easy path. When you talk about the late nights and the difficulty of this, this has been the most difficult path for me, is realizing that there really isn't an option. I know not everyone agrees. And I don't know how to, I mean, I watched ten hours of council meetings last week, which is not on my agenda, but I don't, I don't know how to help folks to this realization that we find ourselves at. But I would love, well, I'm, you know what? I'm going to stop and say it's not the easy path for me. It's not. And I think it's the inevitable path. I'll stop.
Councilmember Guido?
Thank you, Becky, and I, I share your angst. This has not been an easy decision. I do want to echo what councilmember Weller said as far as Welch Comer presenting those three options. It's, it really is clear to me that there's really only one option. But I think there is a chance to plan for the future. And I want to thank the citizens who continue to be engaged, continue to want to make our downtown the best place possible and who have come forward with a number of different options for us to consider as far as preserving trees in the future with new technologies, new engineering technologies that I think Welch Comer can and should look at going forward to make sure that trees that are planted could live even longer than thirty-odd years, which is the typical life of an urban tree. So I want to encourage that going forward. I want to just share with you what one citizen said to me today. He said, I want to live in a community where we can get to yes and work together to move forward and not just preserve the status quo and meet our goal, which is revitalization of downtown. And there are a number of factors, as councilmember Weller reminds us, to make that happen. But we need to move forward with this and if we could preserve the trees, believe me, I think everyone up here would, would do what they could to do it. But we need to look at, what can we do to keep those trees that we are planting replacing current trees with? With the, the engineering technology that is obviously out there and that other cities are using to ensure that trees are continuing to, to live and can live beyond just the average typical age of a, of a tree in an urban setting, which is not always ideal for, for a tree. So that's what I have.
Councilmember Wright, Pat? I'm sorry, Parks?
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said and so I'm not going to repeat everything. I do want to express my appreciation for the collaboration from our community, for their input, for their thoughts, for their action. I hope that when next summer comes and our businesses are suffering, I hope you put that energy into that. Please help them. I'm asking you now to do something. Whatever happens, when this project starts, we need that kind of activism to help our businesses survive next summer. So I really hope that you take that to heart as you're asking us to take a lot of things to heart as well. Going forward, whatever is the best decision, we're going to do the best we can with the information and the resources that we have and also the restrictions that we face. So I'm, like I said, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. And I thank my fellow council members and the city staff for going through this process with us and with helping us and us helping each other. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
So I was right. Councilmember Wright?
Not to sound like a broken record, but I do concur with my fellow Not to sound like a broken record, but I do concur with my fellow council members in, in what we have discussed thus far. I know I have said this before, and that is when both Ann and Eileen and myself were at a conference, probably about five, four or five years ago now, where we looked at some of the possibilities of keeping our trees intact, keeping our citizens safe. We were encouraged by some of the information that we had in terms of the suspended sidewalks and some of those kinds of things, which my understanding is that that is not a practicality at this juncture. And in terms of, you know, being able to keep those trees that we have now, the, the structure of the latticeworks is such that we don't really know where, which trees are connected to which roots. And so that's a whole other peeling back the onion in terms of what, okay, what if we, we get to one of these trees, we think it's a diseased tree, but yet the, the roots of other healthy trees are conjoined and we're taking out then more trees? And it just, that could just go on and on, and again, to the detriment of the project. And I think, as someone said earlier, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity that we have, and I for one, don't want to squander it. I want to try to maintain the integrity of some of the trees that we have downtown, but not at the expense of losing this project either. And I would applaud my councilmember Dubin in terms of talking about the fact that if we, if we look to other sources of revenue beyond these ARPA funds and it becomes apparent that we are not going to be utilizing these funds, we're not going to be considered for anything again down, down the road. And so that's a consideration that people have to be looking at as well. But I think we are charged with maintaining and safeguarding the safety of our citizens. And with the trees that are in place right now, with the infrastructure that we have right now, we are not able to do that. And so that has to be another, you know, driving factor that we look at, and none of this is easy. We've all gone through the pains of trying to see this through and not sacrifice the things that are dear to us, and we just have to, we have to come to the conclusion that sometimes there are decisions that you have to make that are not popular, but in the long run and in the end, are the right decisions. So I thank you all.
Councilmember McCall?
We need a modern infrastructure. We've all said it, I think, and said it, and said it. And I'm, I'm, like I say, I know architecture, I know the trades, I know what it takes to build a street, and I've looked at the drawings, the old drawings, the new drawings, and we cannot, we cannot, in a practical sense, put in the modern art, put in the modern infrastructure, electrical, plumbing, stormwater, sewer, all those things. We have businesses that are interested in putting in sprinkler systems, and they can do that when they had a chance, when we have a chance to redo the, where we're moving water around and for fire flow and those types of things. They can't retro that into the system that's there. We have to have a modern infrastructure. 20 years in the life of a tree, I've been here 50 years, this is, you know, I remember the fruit trees, we've all talked about that. We will put in better trees. I wasn't too crazy about some of the actual tree choices that were on the landscape plan, but there are many, many other choices out there that would be suitable for, for urban architecture and what we're doing downtown. But the infrastructure, first and foremost, we've, we've got to have that. If we want to encourage new businesses to come into our community, we have got to give them a place to live. In this community, we talk a lot about home. We talk a lot about coming home. Pullman's got to be your, Pullman's got to be your home. With the dissolution of the PAC 12, we have no idea the challenges this community will be facing in the future. We've got to have a good place for people to land, and this is an unprecedented also opportunity to encourage that. As Ann said, work for those downtown businesses, build their future in perhaps a completely new light. I came here 50 years ago under the PAC 8. It was a big deal then. It was a big deal a month ago when they tore it apart. And we have to find other ways to have Pullman be Pullman, of course with WSU, of course with SEL, of course with our business partners. But we can't, we can't build it on nothing. We can't build it on the old, and if we, and if the trees are, yeah, if, if we have to do it, we have to do it. But we really need, we really, really, really need that new, modern, 50, future plus infrastructure in our downtown. We need to look out, you know, I, I want my nieces, grandnieces and nephews to come here and be proud Cougars in 10 years. What's to be proud of if our downtown remains the same as it is now? We hear endless complaints about do something, do something, do something. But no matter what it seems like we try to do, this is where we're at. And we've got to get beyond where we're at. We've got to look towards that future. We've got to get towards, yes, we need the modern infrastructure or we have nothing. We've got to find our way back home, and we need to build a new home without the PAC 12. And we have $9 million which to spend, which is a pittance in reality. Nothing, it's a pittance in reality, but this we can do.
Councilmember Weller?
Just real quick, I've already said everything, and you know, you all, I, I, one thing I want to make sure, and I appreciate Councilmember Dubin saying this, I didn't mean this was an easy choice for any of us. I didn't mean that, you know? This is not. And I know from our own interactions and from all of the meetings that all of us have been to, the, the research, you know, Councilmember Dubin, I'm just, it's so impressive. Everything that we've done, you know, is because we care. So I hope you understand, it's not the easy decision. That's not what I meant. I do appreciate what all of you have gone through. I mean, I, I think with any other council members that I've served with in the past have gone through the amount of effort that this sitting council has. And we faced a few challenges that... I will say that, you know, moving forward, given what, what has been addressed, I do feel, College Hill Association had discussed the need for a rebank, and I do think that is appropriate, moving forward with this. And, yeah, we'll step forward together, so.
Anyone else? I definitely appreciate everyone's passion, both community and council members, and all the time and energy that's put into this. It's, this is what's going to make our community best. Are there any other items on this project downtown? Councilmember McCall?
A couple of things that have come up in some of the comments that have been floating around in the community. There's been some, some confusion about the, about ADA accessible parking.
What would you like to know? Hi.
I, I would like to have some other voice other than me explain the ADA parking. Well, I look at the drawings, and to me, they're sparkling clear that there are three ADA accessible, van accessible parking areas on Main.
Correct.
And they are on page, I hold it right side up. I'm, I'm noted for holding these upside down, as Ann probably remembers. On page C311 and 10, and these, I mean, these drawings are very, very, very detailed, but these are actually very readable. So those parking spaces do exist in the, in the current plan.
The plan for the whole project is providing three accessible stalls on Main Street and then two other accessible stalls, one on Kamaiakon, south of Main, one on Pine, south of Main. So that would be a total of five accessible stalls within the area.
Thank you. And the other thing that's been floating around there, and goodness knows, we're trying. I've had a lot of questions about, could ARPA money have been used to build bypass?
No. I think the easiest way to answer that. The last jumping off point we had was on the North Bypass, which the state already owned the property, except for about a three-quarter mile stretch. And it, last check before they took bypass off of RCW is even owning the process, the property, it was going to be a 75 to 85 million dollar project. We're spending about $8 million to go a third of a mile right now on downtown. So no, couldn't have. The South Bypass would have acquired, would have required property acquisition as well. So add a lot more to that previous number, plus it was a longer distance to travel.
And that's also in the, in the, in the hands of state transportation. That's looking at the freight mobility study. Can you update us?
Trying to get money regionally for the freight mobility study. Last conversations with the Department of Transportation are, the South Bypass and the North Bypass as they exist are not up for consideration anymore. They're, in fact, the North Bypass was listed, RCW is, I believe, Highway 576, what he said? And that's been removed in 2016, so the North Bypass is not an option when property was acquired for airport. That took that out of the mix. So there, we're trying to get a study funded to look at other options. Specifically, it's on your legislative goals and part of the draft of the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Can I get a clarification? I'm not sure if your question was, could the money be used for the bypass? Or was, because you answered that there wasn't a funding, the funding wasn't large enough, but could money have been used from the ARPA money to do a bypass?
No, there wouldn't have been enough, and we would have it spent or committed by the end of 2024. And then, and if it's committed at the end of '24, have it spent by '26. So that would, the whole is $80 million to come up with more money before we lost that remainder amount. So if we got a bunch of $80 million grants or a bunch of grants equalling up to $80 million or some earmarks or some things, yeah, there's, there is the possibility, but we risk losing that money that we have right now.
Okay, I was just clarifying that it wasn't that bypasses were excluded from an option for the use of the money. I wasn't sure if that was your question or not.
There are specific uses allowed for that, those ARPA dollars, but there was just another ruling in the last 60 days that expanded some more opportunity for that, but we'll, we'll pass that planning point.
Okay. Other? If not, Mike, do you have any last comments on this item?
No, thank you. If, we'll replay things back. There was a lot of questions that came out of Councilmember Weller's deal. We'll see if we can get some answers to those as the days go on as well.
So, Councilmember Wright?
I'm just wondering, since some of this discussion is in regard to the project redesign, if you will, why we didn't have Welch Comer here tonight?
Because they're trying to finish the bid documents to get them out on time, and there weren't any specific questions towards them that staff didn't feel like we can handle. Everything that we'd heard from the previous meetings through our meetings with them, we felt we could bring along. And it's most important, because we haven't been able to do anything else otherwise, is we need to get those bid documents out on the 18th.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Okay, if not, then we'll move on to discussion items. The first one is 2024 legislative priorities. And Mike Urban?
Thank you, Ann. This agenda item is a continuation of the previous items from August 22nd and September 12th. Attached to this agenda is the most recent 2024 draft legislative priorities. And along with that, I hope if you had a chance to review, AWC had declared their priorities very recently. I'd sent an email to council in the last week, so you can see how our priority lining up with our association. So again, we're, we've had the little scheduling issue. I'm looking at my buddy D, he's still waiting to hear back from the one. Okay, we're going to give them until tomorrow morning, and then we're going to set a date and a time, and however many folks from the delegation can make it, will be able to make it. But as the first week of November does come upon us when we expect to meet with them, staff is requesting any final edits, specific language or talking points to incorporate in the draft that you see in front of you, and so we can bring it back at the next agenda for final discussion bar, for approval.
Dan? Yes, Councilmember Guido?
Just a question on the transportation safety project priority, downtown bypass, which we were just talking about. Just questioning the, the $5 million reference, are requesting $5 million for a bypass location and design work, is that, is that the study?
Yeah, direct copy over from last, no changes.
Okay. So I, in light of what you've just said, I, I have problems with that, with that reference, $5 million, when we're talking about, you know, 75 to 100,000 for the South Bypass as an option. And are we, I mean, the way it's phrased, I guess I'm not, not understanding what we're exactly asking. By requesting $5 million for a bypass location and design work, the city of Pullman and its partners can focus on removing heavy traffic in the downtown area while providing regional transportation solutions. I, that, the second part of that sentence I'm fine with, but it's by requesting $5 million for a bypass location and design work that I have trouble with.
Sure. And just a little reminder to last year, when you discussed this, part of the discussion on this amount is we were running by looking at other folks' legislative priorities, that we weren't asking, making any specific asks for anything. So that's where the $5 million came in through that discussion. How, how much would it cost us to design the North Bypass is part of what that is. The RACE grant, do you remember how much the RACE grant was? Yeah, so $1 million to design Airport Road from Terror View to the new piece, we're talking about a pass, but I'd be happy to edit that to a different number.
No, that helps clarify. So we're talking about the, the design process and not necessarily like the actual bypass itself. So I guess it's just a wording thing for me, that it just is a little confusing to me. If we could make that clearer, that it's a design work?
Sure. What would you like the edit to?
And if the $5 million is, is what you think and your best educated guess, I'm fine with that. I would just say for design work?
So how about by requesting $5 million for bypass design work?
Yeah. And just the location makes it confusing to me.
Sure. I think one of the things to give council an opportunity to discuss amongst yourself is, you balance very carefully, what do we need versus what can we get to get us started? So if there's a lower number, I think that might, the legislature might be more fundable. I would certainly want to consider that. I don't want to price us out of the market.
I don't feel equipped to, to make educated guesses on that. That's where I'd look to your best guess with your staff, experts. And I, I mean, if you feel like that's based on, you know, the airport design, if that makes sense to you, then I think we need to, to ask for what we, what we need.
Yeah. I feel part of what this is, is we want to put our legislators on record that we want them to go to bat for us. And so it needs to be a significant number that they're going to bat for us for.
Other edits to the legislative priorities? Yeah? Sounds like?
No comment on the spacing?
I appreciate that it is one page. I, I asked for that, I, yes, I appreciate that it's, that it's, that it's one page.
Thank you. I needed the ego stroke.
And, and yet you included everything that everybody else wanted in here too, so that's great.
Okay, I'll bring the edits, and I'll put it on regular agenda for the next meeting, so we can do the final edits again when you have another chance to review it with a different lens, and then we'll finalize it and get it out to the delegation ahead of their arrival. Thank you.
The next item is the city council, the draft goal, Code of Conduct, and I believe that one's yours also, Mike.
It is, thank you. So as part of 2022, 2023... So as part of 2022, 2023, city council goals and priorities, review and update the code of conduct for staff and elected officials was identified. So this is a carryover from the September 12th city council meeting where this topic came forward, and we were asked to incorporate the Corvallis Oregon Code of Contact as code of conduct, as well as some language, previous email that I sent out, we were working that document. So what you see now attached to this is a draft resolution that would introduce the code of contact, code of, proposed code of conduct, which you'll see marked as Exhibit A. So much like the other item, we're here to get edits, additions, corrections, so we can bring a final document for council action, for final discussion and council action.
Councilmember Guido?
Thank you for working on this. I think it's the best exhibit that we were shown. We were shown several examples, and I think this was the one landed on, and I appreciate you using that as a cornerstone for this. So again, kind of language thing, covenant of understanding, to boil it down, we're here to engage your ideas, not each other. I would suggest respectfully that we just drop the "not each other" and just "here to engage your ideas." Personally, I'm fine with engaging each other. I don't consider that a negative thing. So I, it just stands as we're here to engage your ideas.
Others? Councilmember Parks?
I just found one, Councilmember Guido, I found one sort of like, oh, under speak. It says, "Speak at the meeting or forever hold your peace." That was really final to me, and I thought, you know, I don't know what the meaning of that is. Maybe, I don't know if it's.
I think there's context from Corvallis.
Well, something happens sometime.
In my defense, it's just a copy and paste.
No, and that's fine, but it doesn't sound like us, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Francis. Yeah, I agree with that, Ann, and it's important to not, oh, boy. When I talk to behaviorists, I get mad at them all the time for using colloquialisms. Because what you and I understand today, somebody else might not quite understand five years from now, or someone from a different culture. One of the examples I love is that, you know, you and I say Romeo and Juliet at the balcony, we know what it means, but someone from a completely other culture, that would mean nothing. So that did catch my eye, and I would not have brought it up if you hadn't first, so that we could, yeah, we could maybe adjust that and avoid those colloquialisms, because they do, their meanings fade over time.
So I don't know what suggests, maybe, and it's already indicated, come to the meeting prepared. So I think that is kind of covered. I don't know if it'd be something like, speak thoughtfully, or I don't even know if we need it. I don't know what it's, what it means.
I think what this is in reference to is there's probably a meeting where there was a discussion, the person didn't provide their input at the meeting, but then they left the meeting and provided it to the public and didn't. And it's like, if that's what was on your mind, you should have talked about it when we were in that discussion.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was thinking it was. So maybe something like, I don't know how to rephrase that, though. Be, you know, be certain to share your thoughts in the meeting, or I don't know how to say it.
Councilmember Weller?
Oh. Go ahead.
I was just going to suggest striking that, that whole line. We speak at the meeting. Clearly, we have no problem, any of us, so.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, I agree with Councilmember Dubin. I also believe, respect everyone's time. I don't think it really needs to be everyone's time, just respect everyone, staff, mayor, so on. And do I need to know this to make a decision now, or just want to know the answer? Sometimes knowing the answer is important. I mean, it's important to know the answer and make the decision. I don't know why that would be, there'd be a differentiation.
I'm sorry, can you go back to respect everyone's time? I'm not picking it up up here.
Under respect, is the third point, under respect?
Yeah.
Where it says, "Respect everyone's time," just remove time. Respect everyone.
Got it. And I'm with you on the other piece, please continue.
All right, and I would just say somewhere in here, I had, I heard a great line. You can disagree without being disagreeable. And so somewhere in there, I would ask if we could put something along those lines. Yeah, ability, something.
Perhaps under speak?
Yeah.
So two that I have, and the first, and it's, actually, there's four of them, but there's two of each. The first, under the last one, under prepare, it says, "Ask questions of each other, especially if it's ward-related." And then the last one, under ask, not in the context or topic, save your question for offline. I'm questioning as it relates to OPM, since Oregon's not under the same OPM that Washington's under. Those could be problematic to, where it says, "Save your question for offline." That is, go talk to council members about that topic. I mean, so I just want it to be clear as it relates to the open public meetings.
Perhaps we could say, save your questions for staff for offline? That's how I construed that, is if you have questions of staff. So instead of asking Sean 18 questions that I could have either done before the meeting, or I can follow up with afterwards, that's how I construed that. So maybe we should, so not with.
Just for a clarification, otherwise it could imply things. And then the, then under prepare, the second item and the third item, where you have no later than 24 hours, and then no later before 24 hours. No, with Corvallis, theirs was, the first one was 10:00 AM of the meeting day, and the other one was 2:00 PM of the meeting day. And my question to our council is, is 24 hours enough time? Or is there a balance in there? So, Councilmember Hall?
That, that, those specificities, I'm not sure belong in this document. We're talking about a code of conduct, not necessarily process. So I.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I would almost pull those.
Yeah, so I'd pull that out of there, because that's process, it's not, it's two different horns on the same goat, but.
So bullets two and three, under prepare.
Correct. Yeah, because they're all about, it's about the preparation, but when we get those hard, fast timelines, and I was trying to think, well, what happens if there's a holiday and we meet after holiday, which doesn't hardly ever happen, but if so, then that means we actually have to by Friday have it submitted based on this. So I was, I was kind of following timelines, but at the same time, I want to be, I also want to be respectful of staff. It's that balance. Councilmember Guido?
Well, I wonder, I wonder if that's worth putting in, that, again, I understand what Councilmember McCall is saying, that it's a process thing, but it's also a preparation thing. And helpful for a new person, a new council member, to understand that staff is busy, and if you have a question for them, to give them as much advance notice prior to the meeting as possible. Something general like that.
Something like that. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. Under respect, the last bullet item, I don't understand that at all. Check the pulse of the group to ensure accountability.
Another colloquialism, yeah.
What does that mean?
I'm hearing some strikets up there.
Other comments? Thank you, Mike, for your work on this. I know it's a nebulous thing, and really, we needed it sitting in front of us for us to be able to start sharing our heart and what we're trying to intend with this.
Sure, let me link this up and email the cleanup piece, so you have more time to digest it before the next council meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're at the point in the meeting for new business. So members of the public may bring items of new business to the attention of the council under this agenda item. Is there anyone who has any new business to bring? Yes?
I just want to announce that the Riverside mural is complete. If you have walked down there, it's pretty spectacular. And the dedication for the mural will be on Thursday, October 12th, at 11 o'clock, 11 to 12. And there will be cake.
Thank you, that should have been in the announcements that we put out, so I forgot that one. Anyone else for new business? If not, we're now going to go into executive session. At this time, the city council will adjourn to the executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-110 to consider the election of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when the public knowledge regarding such condition would cause a likelihood or increased price. And while the provision of the open public meeting does not apply to discussion related to interpretation or application of labor agreement for that portion of the meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taking during the course of all collective bargaining, professional negotiation, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made during the course of negotiation or proceedings, the city council is announcing its intention to discuss such matters in executive session. The executive session is expected to last 10 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the anticipated additional time needed by the city council. The council does not anticipate taking action following the executive session. With that, it's now 9:09, and we'll start at 9:12, so in three minutes.